Five seconds. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. If you would, please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with thankful hearts, thankful for the blessings that you continue to bestow on us. We're thankful for the school system, for this community, and all those that support us. We ask your continued blessings, dear Father, as we strive to educate our children in a normal daily way. We asked, we pray for the revocation and the abolishment of COVID and pray for our children to be safe, our staff to be safe, and that we would have a successful school year. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three is citizens address to board. Did we have anyone sign in, Ms. Lane? All right. Item number four is approval of the work session agenda. We have our agenda items before us. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor? Okay, no one has opposed. Motion carries four zero. All right, at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Pulis for items of information.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone. Obviously, we have several in the crowd tonight. And again, if you look around, we have implemented a leadership academy within McIntosh. And so, members that are present are here to learn what a board work session is like. And they'll join us again for a business meeting. And they also have to attend a county meeting or a city meeting as well to learn how the process unfolds. So, we welcome everyone tonight. The first thing that we have up here in the goal area one, student success is our graduation rate. And so, we do have our three principles here, but if you can pull that first one up. And Mr. Willis, join me if I miss something here. But, you know, each year, we start out by looking at every single student, whether or not they're on track or if they're missing a course, two courses, whatever, so that we can make sure that we get them through this school year and onto graduation. So, we've done a great job over the last two years. Our graduation rate has continued to be over ninety percent. When we started this process almost two years ago when I got here, we were sitting at fifty percent. And so, as it stands today for the class of two thousand and twenty-two, we're at seventy-three percent are on track, ready to graduate right now. Now, that's still not acceptable for us. So, what you'll see, though, is that we have our on-track students. Clicker's not working here. We have our sixty-one students who are on track to graduate. And then, we've had a total of one hundred and thirty-six that have been here throughout the course of the last four years. And we've had fifty-two that have left the system for one reason or another. We have two students with disability that will graduate, but unfortunately without the degree that we need them to. And then, we have twenty-one who are not on track. And so, when you look at the twenty-one who are not on track, broken down, you'll see that six of them are just missing one section. And one section means that they can easily get caught up. And so, when you look at a seventy-three percent, those six get their credits earned. We're at eighty percent already. Go ahead.
Sorry. The two in red are actually two students that we don't know where they are currently. They're not special education students. They are students that were with us. They disappeared. But we're in the middle of looking for them through social media, through similar people that know them.
So, these are the two dropouts that categorizes dropouts.
And they're, they should be graduating with us, but once we find them, if they're in another school or what have you.
We have two that are categorized as fifth-year graduates as well that we're talking about. So, with this, we've done a great job, and I'll say this, I, you know, really respect the work that's being done at the high school. They go out and find a student, and they either get them in a night school, they get them back in school, or if they get them into a homeschool program. And those three things are very important to how we process this. So, with the twenty-one that are left, again, you're looking at the six that are there. If they're able to get through their credits, they'll be at eighty percent. You go all the way to the bottom, that we could be at a ninety-eight percent graduation rate if all twenty-one of them get everything accomplished. Now, one of the things that Mr. Willis has been asked to do, and he's done a great job with this, is every one of those twenty-one students needs a mentor. And those mentors go and they say, "You're mine. Okay, I'm gonna help you. I'm gonna make sure I track you. I'm gonna make sure you get to school. Make sure that you're doing your homework so that you can get caught up." So, we're excited to sit at seventy-three, but it'll be, it'll be a great year when we get back up to ninety-eight by the time the year rounds out. All right, any questions on graduation?
I just have one question. Other than the mentor, what other strategies do you have to try to? Because twenty-one to me is a lot of students that are behind. And what else are we doing to try to make sure that these students? I mean, I know that we've cut, and part of my concern is we've cut part of the day out of the instruction. And now, we have twenty-one students that are behind. What are we doing to make sure these students?
Well, at the same point, though, you have the block schedule, which allows us to actually schedule them because now they have eight opportunities when they only had seven in the past. So, the last period of the day that we talked about, that's when they bring them in and do the one-on-one with them, that they can help them out and get them through these courses. Twenty-one is fewer than we've had the entire time I've been here. So, again, I think this is very doable to make sure that we're getting it accomplished. As well, when you're, when you're sitting with these students and you have a mentor, we're making sure they have the right courses. And that's equally as important to get through the process. Anything else that you'd like to add to that?
All of them will be referred to communities and schools. The story of going through that process and the ones that can be served by her. You know, that's another aspect of support that we offer at the high school. It's been very successful over the past year since she's been there. And, you know, and continued parent support, you know, contact, you know, just making sure everybody's involved to get this youngster to be successful.
Any other questions on the graduation rate and how we're doing?
The fifty-two that has left the system, do we, we chalk that up to more of maybe COVID reasons or folks moving or?
There are a variety of reasons why. We've looked a lot of these. They'll move out of state. They'll move to different places throughout the state, et cetera. But they know the names of each and every one of them, or they went off to. A family moves, you know, when you have a family that's in transition, they'll come and go. And I would say that that number is high when you look at us, but it's been that way for the last three years that I've looked at. We have a high transition population. All right. The next area to look at here is our test scores for the two thousand and twenty-one school year. And Mr. McNair is gonna hit the highlights of those. And if you remember, we talked about these at our board training that we had over at, in Jekyll. But these now are, we have some numbers that came in from the RISA and the state to talk about.
All right, good evening, board members.
Good evening.
As the saying is, go wrong, you're going wrong. So, I'm gonna be sure that we cover everything. I'm glad the principals are here because if you guys wanna chime in, as I go through it, I'm gonna talk about some of the highlights, really comparing, spending most of my time comparing where we were in nineteen and where we are with twenty-one scores because we didn't test in twenty. And so, our biggest concern was learning loss. What happened during that time? Were our teachers able to teach? Were kids able to get what they needed to be successful? One of the things I want to start off with before we start is with perspective and context. I start with that because one of the things the state kept emphasizing to systems test coordinators, myself and people within the district, is that when you look at the test scores, let's take them within context. You have to remember, we were in a COVID period, a COVID-nineteen during twenty-twenty-one. We had quarantine. We lost a number of hours, hundreds of hours in instructional time with kids having to be quarantined.
Eleven thousand school days.
Eleven thousand school days. Virtual learning. A lot of our kids had difficulty with virtual learning. Some would start off well, and then after a while, I'm not in front of a teacher, and that would create problems. Attendance. So, the attendance was up and down also. So, again, we had a lot of challenges, but I think the most important challenge, one of the challenges that I just didn't even think about initially was the pedagogy. That's me as a teacher, learning how to teach. They did not teach us how to teach virtually when we were in school. And so, our teachers stepped up to the challenge and basically did it and made it happen. So, I wanna congratulate them. It's my opinion that they're our heroes. And the reason they're our heroes is because through thick and thin, while we were going through the testing, preparing for testing, going through the testing sessions, they were right there. So, again, my heroes are the parents, teachers, students, and all of the stakeholders who were involved in supporting our school system during the test period. I mentioned before in one of our meetings, over eighty percent of our kids tested. So, even if they were virtual, we had kids coming back in and testing and trying to do their best, which was the most important thing that we were looking at as a system. We need you in the building, and we need to see how you're doing. So, this allowed us to do that, okay? Let me just move on. Any questions about any of that? Again, that pedagogy piece where our teachers just really stepped up to the plate, I'm excited because they did. And they did what they needed to to help our kids be successful.
The other area you'll talk about is that between March and the end of the school year, there were forty-four school days missed. And then, we started school two weeks later than intended. So, again, that's additional ten days of lost instruction.
That's exactly right. And that's what's so remarkable about, remarkable about the scores I'm gonna show you. When you look at twenty-one versus nineteen, because we didn't score, we didn't test in twenty. One of the things I wanted to start off with is with the high school. If you look at your chart, I did provide those charts for you. They're on your screens also. I wanna place a little bit more emphasis on the percentage of students proficient levels in three and four. When you look at those charts, that is from nineteen, okay? It looked like we were below the, we were below the RISA and we were below the state in American Lit and competition. You go to twenty-one, now our system is actually above the RISA and the state when it came to our test results. So, you're looking at our students who are proficient to distinguish, we are above the state in our American Lit area from nineteen to twenty-one, which was remarkable to me. The fact that we actually test and we actually improved was a good thing.
I think we were one of the very few systems in the state that went to school all year last year.
That's exactly right. So, having our kids in the building has been, was a significant improvement as far as our schools actually being successful when you look at, and especially at the high school where they had kids coming and going, it seemed like, all the time. But Mr. Willis and his staff, they just did what they needed to do to get the kids prepared and to provide instruction during that time. You look at the scores, I put them here a little backwards, but if you look at the blue, this is all the kids in our schools, in the high school that took the American Lit in twenty-one versus two thousand and nineteen, okay? The blue, the twenty-one. And you can see where in level two or developing learner, our scores went up. Our areas went up as far as kids that were moving there as opposed to in level one. But the real thing, again, I wanna place emphasis on that three and four, where we actually started making some improvements with American Lit and composition, okay? This is our algebra in nineteen. I think it looks like we were at about five percent as a system. This recent is at thirty-seven, and the state is at forty-one. Two years later, magic. Teachers started, kids started doing their job. Teachers were working with them. Now, we're above the RISA again and above the state. We went up to forty percent. Thinking about perspective, we missed all these days, but our kids kept stepping up to the plate, okay? Here again, a little backwards, but again, it shows you where we're starting to move away from that developing area where you can see in the gray, we had forty-one percent of our kids in that area. It went straight to developing. So, the skill sets are actually improving, which is a good thing because algebra is kind of like the first math class for high school before you start taking geometry and algebra two. So, again, made great gains in there. Unfortunately, we didn't have any kids that went to four, but we were moving our kids from two to three. So, that's a good thing, okay? And biology, the other area in nineteen, we were about thirty percent. The recent, the state, right at about forty percent. Our kids, again, were back in the building. Now, we're playing on the same playing field. Forty-two percent, forty-four percent, forty-two percent. So, we were right there again where we needed to be as far as our scores were concerned. And then, here you're looking at the comparison between twenty-one and two thousand and nineteen. Again, the goal is to move our kids from those level one to level two and three and four, preferably from two to three and three to four, okay? So, we made quite a few gains there. Kids are basically making improvements. Our teachers have done a great job with providing the necessary instruction. Just a little, do you have any comments about that?
I just wanna say, you know, that's something Mr. McNair said, that our teachers and students in unprecedented times stepped up and achieved at high level. You know, it's, they were into it at an extremely high level, and this bored out. I mean, it's, you know, there's teaching and learning all the time.
I need to add this because there's, they're saying an important change that we put in place. And so, when the state moved to count EOCs as point zero one, we increased it to thirty. So, the reflect of that, Mr. Willis, what was your opinion on?
Oh, we moved to thirty, and also to go along with that, you know, we did install that students would have to retake the EOC if they failed. So, there's incentive there, you know, the kids are very, very driven, and they wanted to perform. I can honestly say that if any student blew it off this year, I couldn't tell you who it was. They tried their best, and when that happened, you know, they had been taught by grade teachers. The students bought in to what we were doing and did the results, you know, the proof there.
I would have to agree with that a hundred percent. When they knew that the test was gonna be worth thirty percent, it just changed their whole perspective on their willingness to come to school and perform. So, again, kudos to the high school and the things that they did, but that was a significant. I was anticipating, to be honest, some learning loss because of the lost instructional time, but that didn't happen. We, the kids, just really stepped up and, like I said, committed, did a great job at the high school. United States history kind of went down a little bit in that area. This is in nineteen. But then, we turned around in twenty, and we're actually, twenty-one, and we're actually above. We're at thirty-one, thirty-seven percent compared to thirty-four and thirty at the state. So, again, it speaks volumes when you look at the kids that actually took the test. And I can tell you, it was the kids that were actually in our buildings. The kids that were virtual, there were some performance issues, but when you look at the kids that were in our buildings, these scores are more reflective of the students that were in class with the teacher, okay? And here we are again with the blue and gray as far as our performance. The blue is a good thing, meaning we're moving up in that area two and developing, and then in three with proficient. And this is our improvement, even with the missed year of instruction, basically, or test scores to determine what our instruction was, okay? So, the next, into the middle school. Now, when you look at the scores for the middle school, English language arts, these are more reflective of all three grade levels. So, if you're looking at scores for twenty-one, you're looking at their scores in relation to the state and the district. And we were right on par in sixth grade with our English language arts scores. In seventh grade, we're right there in the mix. And in eighth grade, we were right there. So, again, looking at the scores between the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we were right there in comparison with the state and the recent when our, when looking at our scores, okay?
But we do think the state and RISA, since the eighth grade level comes to beginning level, which is.
Right, right. That's exactly right. And that was a great improvement, too. And I would say, too, that the middle school probably had the highest number of kids with the COVID that were out at different times, too, during the year. And they were still able to come in. We were still able to get kids in the building that had been in virtual and that type of thing to come and test. So, that was a good thing, knowing that kids were out. They were still coming back. And I wanna thank Ms. Hewlett and others on her, on their team for reaching out to the parents early on to let them know we still have makeup. She can come in. You can, you know, especially if you've been having the instruction to come in and get that necessary assessment completed. And they did a good job there. So, looking at this from twenty-one, that's what our scores were, and then comparing them from nineteen. As you can see, there's not too much of a difference when you start thinking about learning loss, but there were some challenges, some changes with the scores as far as our blue. In the blue area, we went down up in, we went up in twos, went down just a little bit in threes. But with the four or the distinguished area, we're making progress there. Mr. Brooke, you have any comments about?
Part of that's gonna be due to the group that belongs to the hospital, the eighth graders that transitioned up. That was our high performance, the LA score in quite a few years. And the group of sixth graders that came up to us this past year with one of our older ones.
Right, right, okay.
And I don't want anyone to miss this either, but for both, we haven't covered the elementary school data, but we will. The scores, and you won't see them in these terms, but the students who are at home virtually, their scores are counted in here. And so, and there is a drastic difference between face-to-face students and those who have stayed home. And unfortunately, there, you know, there are a couple outliers. There were a few that did well at home. But for the most part, they brought the scores overall down.
Yeah, they were, they were in a very small percentage, those outliers, because most of the students that did come in and take the test, again, they were given the instruction and provided, but it was nothing like being in front of a teacher every day. So, again, we had to count those, too, when we started looking at our scores. So, even though they were out and we had kids in the building, when comparing our nineteen to twenty-one scores, we're still right there in the, where we need to be with the recent. Can, is there room for improvement? Of course, and that's what we're working on this year, okay? Math, pretty much the same thing. This is an area where we're improving as a system, in my opinion, across the board when we start looking at our math scores. Our teachers are doing a phenomenal job. We put more resources in place to support them. Teachers are working hard. We put study hall in place for an after-school study type things in place. So, there are a lot of things that we're doing proactively to try and improve these scores. And again, we encourage our parents and the community to make sure our kids are involved in that process. Seventh grade scores, a little lower than recent when you look at it in comparison. But again, this is making improvement from where we were in nineteen. I don't have those scores up there, but you'll see the comparison to get an idea of what we've done over the last couple of years. Eighth grade, again, we're making improvements, an area where we're gonna continue to work. But again, it's gonna require some commitment, again, on our teachers' part and our students' part, okay?
Yeah, with that, all three of our grade levels did out before the RISA, on the beginning order category.
Right.
So, we're pushing our students into the twos, but not really into the threes.
Sure.
And then, this is our scores. Again, we got, like Mr. Brooke just said, we're pushing into the twos. And we got more in the twos and more in the threes that are headed that way. And then, this is the comparison from nineteen to twenty-one. All right, questions? Any questions about middle school? All right, here's the elementary school. All right. I'm kidding. Here I am again. We kind of looked at the scores again from the standpoint of literacy when it pertains to math and English language arts. So, the percentages that you see for our summary in those blue and gray charts or that, those bar graphs that I provide, is, represents all of the grade levels. So, we look at English language arts, it's third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, okay? English language arts, we're below the RISA and the state, but making improvements. Fourth grade, we're getting closer. We're working hard. And fifth grade, again, we're making improvements in the three and four area, but we're moving our kids more away from the level one and level, to the level two and three. So, again, it's a working process. There's a big emphasis in our district, again, on literacy. And we're gonna get back on track with that because it's very important. Our kids have to start reading and reading more.
And I have to say this again. It goes back to this, and the elementary school had more students on virtual than the others. And so, the transition when they came back was very challenging for many of them because they were behind almost a year when you think about it, by the time they came back in January. So, a lot of, a lot of good work went into. The teachers worked extremely hard at Todd Grant. The face-to-face students did better. Our EIP students did better. But the students who stayed home, you know, if you're not reading twenty minutes a day, it doesn't happen.
And I know they were reading at the elementary school because I didn't go in a class where they were not reading or writing most of the time. And it real, class sizes were a lot smaller, but at the same time, we were still hoping and wishing that our students who were virtual would come back. And again, we did have over seventy percent of our kids back, but still not like having ninety-nine percent of them back or a hundred percent of them back, so.
We're just saying, that way up to a hundred and ninety-seven, it makes a difference there. But the impact was so great without them. You know, it was very, was, holding back to what, what was, as if they had missed nine weeks a year before. Very impactful for us, you know, hopefully, I can see that they do kind of show a little, but their learning. And when we missed that, you know, we have a lot of work to do, we know that. I think we did very well last year with our EIP instruction. We changed a lot of things. We've got a brand new reading curriculum this year. So, we have hit the ground running. This ten-day haul, you know, is important, but hopefully, we're gonna be on track. We can be given the classroom, which is what they need.
Absolutely.
Right now, I think we only have sixteen children that have signed up for both of us, so they're good.
That's good.
We're working on those sixteen, believe me, so we're trying to get them back in the building, especially at the third grade year where it's important that they're learning. They're reading, not so much learning to read at that point, they're learning to read for information. Now, I'm learning about the science words and all the things that are important in context. So, if you look at our chart again, looking at the ELA comparison scores from twenty-one to two thousand and nineteen, despite having all of the kids out and they're transitioning back in at different times, we still were able to maintain at least where we were as far as our levels and things with the ELA across the board with all of our students. So, again, that represents third, fourth, and fifth. And I don't know what percentage of your kids were out at a different grade level. Did we have more third graders out, Ms. Riles, or?
Um, I don't, yeah.
It was just a mixed bag?
It was spread.
Okay. So, again, just taking this in context as far as the fact that we were in and out most of the time. And you have a kid out for nine weeks and then bring him in and say, "You need to catch up with everyone." That becomes a challenge for our teachers.
Well, we also, all of our third graders before calling out, they were, they were all out. In fact, one ELA teacher was out three different times for quarantine. And I believe the last time, she was out about four weeks, so it's very impactful.
Our subs did a great job, but it's nothing like having that classroom teacher in there that knows the pedagogy and can actually move with the curriculum with the students.
And the concern that we're gonna have at this point is that, you know, teaching a child how to read at an early age needs to be done face-to-face. And this is my opinion, and I think the opinion, it has to be done face-to-face. And trying to do it virtually is nearly impossible unless somebody's sitting right there who knows what they're doing. And so, those students who stayed home from pre-K through second grade, you know, if they're entering third grade, for example, they're gonna be behind. And now, we're having to try to catch them up. And our goal is a hundred percent of our students able to read by the end of the third grade at grade level. That's gonna be challenging for those who stayed out, which is one of the reasons we made the significant decision that said, "We really need you in the classes right now." This is important. It's important for your child for the rest of their life.
And I know that we've taken the necessary mitigation efforts and done what we need to do to keep kids safe in the building. But I've been in this game long enough, and I can tell you, unless they're in front of a teacher, it makes it very challenging for us. So, looking at our third grade, two thousand and twenty-one scores, again, we're in the process of rebuilding or redeveloping the necessary learning that needs to take place in our, in our system. So, we were below the RISA in mathematics for third grade. Kind of right there with them in the fourth grade as far as the scores. We were a couple of percentages below the RISA and the state. But then, fifth grade, again, having kids in and out of the building and inconsistent learning taking place is really an explanation of why the scores a lot of times have been so bearable over the different grade levels. And like you said, Ms. Riles, it was so impactful not having those third grade teachers in there, able to work with those kids. Very critical year for them. And then, looking at our scores, again, we have more students in the level two, one hundred and twenty-two, which means they're developing learners, but our goal is to move them more towards that level three, which is more proficient, okay? And then, this is what. And then this is what I talked about earlier with the comparison. We want to make sure, um, if, if we missed a year and we went through the COVID, that we were not too significantly behind. In other words, we didn't have more kids go back to level one when it came to the learning. We had kids staying in two and pretty much staying in three where they were before we, um, experienced the COVID-nineteen, okay? There was a lot of information, that's why I provided the chart for you. Uh, if you have any questions from, from here until the end, um, Ms. Riles, Mr. Booker, Mr. Willis, you guys have any final comments as I close out? Or any concerns? Teachers?
Well, we had two high school courses being offered, where our algebra scores included in their algebra course.
They were not, they were not included.
So with our, um, with our seventeen, which is algebra, we had, um, we did not have any students score beginning learner. We had one student score, um, developing, um, the, the majority of our students all scored in the proficient range. And then our physical science, which also took it in the course test, even though it's not a state test anymore, when the eighth graders had to have a test to, um, to see what their proficiency was, they gave the, our eighth graders the physical science in the course test, even though now it's not administered at the high school. We only had one student score in the beginning range of that. For the majority of them, they were all in the proficient range. And in physical science, I think we actually had four that were in the, uh, advanced stage. So our two eighth grade classes performed very well, um, last year.
And there are honors kids now at the high school in the honors science classes.
Yes, there are the honors classes.
And honors and gifted classes at the high school. The goal here is, again, let's move more of our kids towards that level three proficient and four. Whether they're in a gifted class or not, the goal should always be, let's move our kids. And next year, when we do the presentation, I'm hoping to see that graph change even more towards the three and the four, so.
You know, crystal ball wise, we don't know. We don't know if we're going to have additional issues that might rise throughout the course this year due to COVID. And so we also don't know what the state will do regarding testing. And so our goal and our, our standard right now is to continue to, to teach our students to be prepared to take the end of grade and the end of course test as normal and, and be ready to, to do so. We don't know if the state will implement that point zero one percent, uh, for the EOCs again, because right now it ran out last year. We will soon see the impact because with block, instead of waiting for the end of the year for the EOCs to be taken, they're going to be taken in December. So that's, that's going to be a significant change as well for us.
Yeah, we'll have those results and be able to present it. But the big thing is, is just if we can get kids back in the building, and this is my plea, getting them back in the building, we're going to see improvement on those test scores. We're not bringing them in to see improvement on the test scores as much as the learning that needs to take place in the classroom. And again, I thank all the teachers and administrators for their hard work. Any questions for me? I'm around if you need me.
Thank you, Ms. McInnes.
This is not really a test question, but, um, how many students? I know Ms. Riles said they had about, what did she say, sixteen virtual? How many the other schools have, just out of curiosity? For this year, yeah. How many, eight?
We have eight.
Okay. I figured we may get to it later, but I wanted, while I was thinking about it.
And what we'll see is, when we get to that chart, is that we have eight, whatever your number was, that have decided where we're at. But we still have some students that have not returned.
Returned.
And so those are the ones that we're, they need to make a decision because, um, attendance-wise, they're counting against them unless they have something to bring back. Okay, thank you for giving us that update on the test scores. Um, item three under goal area one for after-school plans. Again, just we've asked the schools, we had plans in place prior to our pause, so now we've had to put those on pause. So now we need to pick that back up and make sure that we're getting our students back after school, catch them back up on the areas that they're deficient in. And so each of the schools has to devise a plan, and I just wanted everybody to understand that that's going to take place and they're coordinating with transportation to get that started again. That's vital part of us, you know, that's one of the real reasons that the federal money came to us, is to, to make sure that we're providing that extra instructional piece. Which goes along the line with the next part, and I mentioned that the Boys and Girls Club sponsored the Early Literacy Academy for our three and four-year-olds in the community. And so we got that up and running, and we had four students that were signed up for it and then we had to pause. So I, I went over there today, we still have four students and that we started back in. Those four students are over there, and the, the focus for those three and four-year-olds, again, is learning how to read and to read early and to learn the different, different aspects of literacy. Um, I'm excited about that, but we need to get those seats filled. And the grant that paid for it is for a good cause. We met with the Sapporo Foundation the other day, again, to try to make sure that we continue with all these programs. Starting them early is so vital to the reading process, so, um, we're hoping that we get some more legs on that, um, and more of our students back in there. So anything you can do when you see a three or four-year-old to be in that after-school program. Last thing is, just to remind, we have, we've had the, um, attendance policy under review for the last thirty days, so if you'll take a look at that, if you have any questions on it, that you, you go back through that. We've added some procedures in there to make sure that everybody's doing the same thing and that, uh, we're, we're trying to tighten the reins on that so that we can make sure that we, if we ever have to refer it to the court, that we know what we're doing. I hate to do that, but the fact of it is, if, if a student's not in school, they're, they're, continue to be deficient in so many different areas. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything possible to, uh, to get that done. Um, any questions on anything under goal area one? From anybody? Okay. All right, under organizational effectiveness, I want to talk about the millage rate, the millage rate review. If you would pull up the spreadsheet that I have there that has the different options, that one right there, okay? So, you know, our millage rate for last year was seventeen point three. And we did that primarily because we had a, what was it, eleven percent reduction in QBE. Um, I think we were fortunate that reduction got cut, but at the same point, we had, there is very challenge in regarding the collection and everything else that took place. So we're sitting in a position right now, based on the information given by Keith Payne, that says, um, can we roll back? And a rollback rate for us would be a change of point three two eight to, to a rate of sixteen point nine seven two, and you'll see that in the highlighted area. So as you read across this particular chart, again, our digest, uh, as it stands, is, is a very hefty amount, um, but it's only a slight increase from, from the previous year. And so when you take into account the amount we have to pay the tax commissioner, the two point five percent, and then what are we estimating our collection rates will be? So you have a, you have one aspect of that is, what is it, at ninety percent, one is at ninety-three, and one's at ninety-five. Um, we've had all those different collection rates over the past several years. I think, Tammy, you tell me you're wrong, but I think we approached ninety-five at one point. Um, but again, to exceed it is, is highly unlikely. So, um, we have to be conservative in this approach. So to really look at things, you got, you want to go over and take a look at the last three columns. And the last three columns says, if, if ninety percent collection rate comes in at a sixteen point nine seven two millage rate, that we would still be under our budget that we have already approved at about twenty-one thousand dollars. If it comes in at ninety-three percent, then we'll be above at two hundred thousand. If it comes in at ninety-five, it's three hundred, almost three hundred and fifty. You know, likelihood of coming in at ninety-five, I can't tell you. I mean, we don't know. Um, we typically plan around the ninety percent rate, and so we, we expect that that would be a, a reasonable amount. Um, with rolling it back, there's no need for, um, you know, the two hearings. Um, you know, as we've talked about this, is my recommendation that we go with the rollback of point three two to sixteen point nine seven two. And Tammy's going to go over those numbers, um, that, that we have to submit. So let's pull up that next chart.
Yes, this is the two, 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 chart, which is where we plug in all of the tax digest numbers that are provided by the tax assessment office. Um, as you can see, we, we compare the twenty-twenty digest to the twenty-twenty-one numbers. There's eight point four million increase for, um, inflation. And that, and we plug in our last year's, the twenty-twenty millage rate, and this form calculates what our rollback could be based on the current tax digest. And that's where we get the rollback rate of sixteen point nine seven two. And next. The next form is the five-year history. And this is just our five-year history, um, showing the sixteen point nine seven two millage rate, and this was advertised in the paper and is on our.
So the intent with this would be that we, uh, would ask the board to approve rolling the millage rate back to the sixteen point nine seven two next Monday? Any questions from anybody about the data that we presented? Uh, I think I've shared this with each of you already, just so that you understand it individually. It's a very conservative approach, and it does, again, it, it gives a little bit more tax break for, for the people here in McIntosh. Barring any questions on that, we'll move to the next one, okay? So minutes from the previous meetings, again, if you'll take a look at those and let me or Ms. Lane know if you have anything that you'd like to change that we might have, um, misstated in those, and then we would ask for those to be approved as well, um, next business meeting on Monday. And if I can ask Ms. Franklin if you'll go through the August financial reports.
Page. Hey, August thirty-first, general operating account. We began the month with two point two million. We had receipts of three point three nine million. We had disbursements of a million three, and we're taking us through the balance of two, just over two million in the general operating account. It's twenty-nine. With the school year sixteen percent complete, we have a period-to-date receipt of three hundred and ninety-six thousand in the general operating account, and, which is two point seven three percent of the budgeted fourteen point five million, the general fund. Next page, expenditures. We have period-to-date expenditures of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, and which is five point eight three percent of our budgeted fourteen point six five. Fund balance, general fund balance. We closed out fiscal year twenty-twenty-one with just over two point three six million, and we have a current fund balance in the general operating account of one point nine million. School nutrition. Has that, school nutrition bank account has eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. Debt service. We began the month with one point three eight million. We had these loss receipts of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. That is a seventeen point five percent increase over August of twenty-twenty. And we have a balance of one point five million in the debt service account.
Yes, summer vacation was good this year.
It was.
Page one eleven. Okay, local projects account. We began the month with one point four million. We had disbursements of twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. We have still one point four million in the local projects account. Finally, the energy lease debt service account. We have five hundred thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Uh, there are any questions over any of that?
All right, if any questions come up between now and, and Monday, just let us know and we'll try to address them, okay? All right, uh, next area up here, Mr. Maso, if you'll join us, if we can hit those highlights for facilities, please?
Great evening, Board. It's a pleasure to be here. We'll start off with our solar project. For those that don't know, that McIntosh County is undertaking a, in an effort to reduce our carbon footprint, we are taking on a big project to add solar panels to two of our schools, the elementary and the middle school. Um, it's a, a great project that we're really looking forward to today. Ms. Franklin and I both received an email with the final details of our financial audit. They audit us and take a look at all of our, um, different forms and, and we fill everything out. And it takes a long process because, um, the financial burden is on them. You know, this is no cost to the system, however, we, um, will end up having a cost savings with electricity. Again, these floor panels do not feed our school, it feeds right into the grid. So it's, um, we are selling back the energy that we produce and, um, getting a discounted rate for the energy that, um, we are purchasing. So we're really excited about this project. So I'm thinking that within the next ninety days, there'll be possible panels, um, starting to be put on the building. No worries to the schools, they've ensured us that they won't, um, affect any of our academic program, they'll work around everything. Um, it's going to be a, a great look for the system as well as, again, just reducing our carbon footprints, um, contributing to the global situation. Any questions on the solar project? All right. So we're, another project we have.
Just a reminder to everybody that we pay about eleven point two cents per kilowatt hour. And so the rate that we get under this is, is at eight cents. So, and it slowly ticks up over twenty years, but bottom line, we should save about thirty thousand dollars a year by allowing them to install these on our buildings.
Another project that I'm really excited about is the move of the kitchen from Oak Grove into the building at the middle school. Uh, Mr. Booker's done a good job of rearranging his school and freeing up those rooms. We have, um, voted on and established a construction manager, and the next step in the process is to actually get bids for the project. Just remembering that we'll get a bid, and then at that point, we'll be able to determine whether we're going to move, move forward or not. I believe that we're going to be able to move forward. Um, Dr. Pulis and the board has done a great job of setting aside the right amount of money, and it's going to be a game changer for us, getting those kids in the building and, um, being able then to make a move on Oak Grove. Um, having the front of the school where Oak Grove is, is, uh, an amazing opportunity for us to, um, make the middle school in line with the other schools. We have such a beautiful Todd Grant, and our high school is a, a model high school. And the hidden beauty of that middle school is kind of hidden behind Oak Grove, and I think that we're going to be able to really make, uh, a big impact as well as a, um, historic impact because right there at the middle school, where Oak Grove sits, is a historic spot, and there's more information to come on that. So the ball is rolling, everything's in order, we've been approved by the state. I'm really excited, then, like I said, the next step is just getting the actual proposal of this is how much it will be. And, um, I'm hoping within the next few months, um, we can have actual hammers on the, on the walls and, and action going on.
Mr. Maso, is there, I know, I know there is, has asbestos in that building?
Um, it's been, it's been tested, we've had, there's going to be some sections that will have to, um, be handled appropriately, but, um, nothing that was obviously concerning enough for us to be occupied in it. And, um, but some of those tiles and some of those things underneath it, it's a possibility. But they'll, they'll appropriately go through that when the demolition, we'll have an RFP for demolition and we'll do a.
We have to look at both buildings, both the, the existing one where we want to move the cafeteria to, as well as Oak Grove, and we'll have to mitigate the asbestos for whatever's in there. That'll be part of the cost assessment.
As part of our beautification of our system and just, um, stepping up to the plate, we're looking at a pond renovation. The pond behind the high school football field, um, is a simple retention pond now, but has the potential to be so much more. Unfortunately, because of the way it is and, um, the depth of it and things of that nature, it doesn't look as beautiful as it can. So we are looking into adding a fountain, and not just for the looks of a fountain. Um, if you'll notice here, I've given you two sheets about these fountains and the benefits of it. We need to aerate that pond in a bad way. Mosquitoes and algae, all the things you see when you look back there and say, hmm, it's just a retention pond, can be alleviated by a really nice fountain in there as well as aesthetically looking, we're going to have some. as aesthetically looking, we're going to have some LED lights on it, and at night, when the football game's going, that's just an added benefit. But the priority has to be to get that place aerated, get the pond in a, in a way that we can showcase how beautiful it is. I, Dr. Pulis has a vision of it being a beautiful area to go. I can see some azaleas all around there, and a nice bank with no weeds on there, just something that will really highlight our facility in another way. So we're in just the beginning stages of looking at it. Anybody could go out and purchase a ninety-nine-dollar fountain that sprays up two feet, that's just not going to do the job, so we're going to look at doing it the right way and making a real smart investment that will pay off in the, in the long run with a beautiful pond. If you'll notice that picture, that picture looks just like our pond with that green algae right there, and we know what's under that green algae and what's going on in that pond, it's a mosquito haven and, as well as an opportunity for us to have some fish in there and some other things if we get some air into that area.
When you think about that, when our visitors come, that's the ticket that they all come through, and that's the first thing they see when they walk through is that swamp.
So more information to come on that. We want to make sure that a significant investment in a fountain, we have the area looking good as well, so that we're really highlighting it, as well as being, I think, safer by not having that going on in there. Oak Grove closeout. Well, with the completion of the kitchen project, like I said, we have to look at what's going to happen with Oak Grove. So Dr. Pulis has tasked me with the job of moving forward, maybe getting some RFPs on what it will cost. It's a, it's a significant cost to level a building and then remove it, so we'll be looking into that. I've met with the maintenance team, and we've already got a plan for going through and looking at all the stuff that we want to, want to keep. But moving old stuff into, into great buildings, we're not going to keep a lot, we're not trying to hoard anything, but we don't want to give away good stuff, too, so, and my job is to get with the principals here soon, and we're going to go through a walk through and say, these are the things we're going to keep, and then make some decisions, possibly a public auction, some other avenues of cleaning those rooms out. In addition, we did have a significant investment in ACs in that, on Oak Grove. They've got some newer units on there, and we're going to remove every one of those and look at a pool barn and a storage and use those ACs as we need them, and we're not going to just get rid of those. We're going to be smart about this and financially responsible with the things that we have there, so a systematic plan of demolishing Oak Grove is in the works, we're going to go through and take our time and make sure it's done right, so that we save the things that we need to save and get rid of the things we don't.
It's become the catch-all for a lot of things.
It has, it has, and it's been a great storage unit for us, but it's time to move on. System painting plan, when Dr. Pulis got here, the high school hadn't been painting inside since, probably since it was built, and now that you know that we painted from the very top to the bottom of all the hallways, well, the next step is the classrooms, they're due. So we're getting a quote on painting the classrooms, and we're going to use these breaks to do that, so during the fall and the winter and the spring, and we'll take a hallway and we'll do a hallway, and then we'll do the next hallway, and we'll systematically check that off, so that this summer, we're done with painting, we're not having a summer painting job at the high school. Next on our list will be the elementary school classrooms. They did a great job getting a lot of them this summer, but we're going to get the rest of those and looking at the hallways there, too, because it's time. A five-year plan of systematically painting our buildings and keeping them up has to be in place, and it seems like every time we turn around, but five years goes like this, and however, is just what we have to do. So we're in the process of obtaining those quotes, a lot of happy teachers when they come back to freshly painted classroom. It'll be a nice way to show them that we care about our facility in a big way. Any questions? Dr. Pulis?
We'll stay right there, let's pull up the COVID-19 update under goal Area Three, Culture and Climate. We'll start with the students, if you can. Again, so when you take a look at this, and I don't know if this thing's not working over here, but we had a hundred and forty-seven reported positive cases for students when you look through there, and so you see them by the date that they were reported, and we had that high point that we were concerned about on August sixteenth, and then with many presumptive positives that we were just waiting for the test, so, you know, we were getting into the eighties that we knew were positive, so our percentages were jumping up to eight, nine, I think the high school may have gotten to eleven percent, so that's one of the reasons we implemented the pause. But as a result of that, again, we start to see the numbers down, so removed from that, we've had a hundred and thirty-six students that have been removed, and we're, we're still tracking eleven students, and so when you, when you look at a lot of the eleven, they took place while they were on their pause, and so, you know, again, this is not just necessarily something that happens at school, it happens outside of school, and we started the summer with it happening outside of school, and so I just want to make sure that everybody realizes, we talk about these masks, these masks aren't just for school, I mean, they're, you know, they're to be worn at Walmart and different stores, et cetera, and so we need to make sure we're continuing to, to stress the importance of social distancing and everything else that goes with it. So the chart goes up and down, and you'll see all that. I think that Mr. Massa and Ms. Thompson are doing a great job of tracking that, the principals are getting the information in, and, you know, we're going to continue with this process. Can you pull up the faculty one? So again, it was, we, we have a total of twenty-nine faculty members that have been reported as positive, twenty-three have been removed, and we're still tracking six, and so we just got to keep up with that, and, you know, the Delta variant is, is, as Dr. Lawton Davis told us, has said, the original, the alpha, and the delta runs about forty-five to sixty days, and then something else comes in, so we've got to make sure that we continue to stay vigilant, but as you see now, that pause was very beneficial for us because we're seeing a reduction. But we also have implemented and continue to implement our protocols and have those in place, and we want to make sure that we're, we're following up on this. Any questions on where we stand for the COVID information? Anything from anyone? Okay. Mr. Massa, anything you want to add on that?
Well, I'll just say that I'm really proud to say that when you look at the CDC guidance, you can say that McIntosh is following the guidance. We haven't deterred from that. I think that if anybody were to look at what we do when we have a positive case, we're following the guidance, and we're doing a good job of that. Again, like Dr. Pulis said, the principals and their staff, their team at the school, their COVID team have been on a constant communication, and not only do we track a kid that has a positive case, we track a kid that's even sick, and we're watching them from a daily basis, and the hats off to those principals, because they've gotten a lot of calls and they're dealing with the parents, so it's appreciated.
Well, I will say, too, that I've had a couple of parents comment to me about how much they appreciated the nurses calling and checking up on the kids and how the family was doing and that kind of thing, so it does, it is appreciated very much.
And we'll continue that, because, you know, we do care. I appreciate you mentioning that. The next area up here is our attendance, as we came back to school, and again, as we had that long meeting, we talked about the pros and cons of all the different instructional models, and so part of that was our philosophy that says we'd much rather have seventy percent of our kids come back in, for face-to-face instruction, and thirty percent if they decided to stay out doing virtual, rather than doing the hybrid, we're fifty-fifty, fifty-fifty, fifty-fifty for durations, and I really anticipated that when we came back on the seventh, we would have about twenty to thirty percent of our folks saying, you know, I'm going to stay out. We're sitting at eighty-five percent, and I think that's a strong indication that, one, our students want to be back in school, and that our parents want our students back in school, and, you know, the protocols are in place, they're trusting the schools to do what's right. We do have several that have said, I'm going to go to virtual, we've said before, there are some legitimate reasons why students need to be virtual, we know there are situations at home, but for the most part, face-to-face is a, is the model that we need to continue to follow. So we do have a number on here, can you pull that up for us, please? So when you, when you, when we started back, we had a hundred and seventy-six students who were absent, okay, so we're down to a hundred and forty-nine at this point, so those are the ones we're going to continue to track, we're going to make sure that some of them are just normal attendance issues that we struggle with, but there are some that are still just sitting at home waiting to see what happens this week, because simultaneous to us saying, hey, we want you back on the seventh of September, the Department of Health said, oh, you better watch it because of Labor Day, and so I think their parents are being cautious, but, but we have seen already, it's been a good week, and we want to continue to monitor that, and the schools report this daily, and I think we're, we're excited to say we don't have as many doing the virtual, and we will continue to provide that as appropriate, but the face-to-face is where it is, and the question was asked to us, well, what happens if the numbers go back up? Well, if the numbers go back up and we have to pause, we have to pause, but I'd still would much rather pause and provide that limited amount during the, doing virtual than to have a shutdown and do the fifty-fifty hybrids, that I, I think right now, talking to my peers, they're struggling with that, because even this fifty-fifty, the kids aren't getting the instructional model, instruction that they need, and then they're still having students that are reporting as positive, and they're still in the close contact, so they, they, they're struggling with making sure everybody gets what's needed. So I'm, I'm, any comments at all from the three principals here about the return?
I'm just so happy that the board made that decision to roll the kids back to school, that's going to show the rest of these kids' lives, which, which lessens if it becomes tested, so.
Yeah. All right. Sandra, anything? Good? Okay. All right, next item up here on our listing is our Leadership Academy, as I, as I mentioned to you already, that, you know, one of the things that, that we are responsible to do as, as a board and as an administrative staff is to continue to build the capacity of our, our leadership team from within, and we started a Leadership Academy, our first meeting was last night, and so we've got great attendance for that from each of the three schools, and as part of that requirement, we talked about several different things. One is that the schools will take on one of the goals of our strategic goals, and they'll go through them and meet with them and revise them, update them, decide if they're the right goals, make recommendations on whether or not anything needs to be changed, and so that they can come back to the board in January and say, here's what we think our next step is for a new strategic plan that meets the needs of us now versus, I think, three, four years ago when we established it last. That's going to be one of their key areas as, as we go forward. Second area, they, they decided to move forward with a book study, not a book for everyone, but a book individually that they will read and then present it to each of the members of it, so, you know, I'm, I'm a firm believer to stay current on things, I do read a lot, and I think it's important to read a lot, but not necessarily to say, I'm going to do this and I want to change the way I do business, but to reflect upon how you do things in order to say, these are things that I think I can incorporate, so that's one of the other aspects of it. The other thing for them to do is to talk about other topics that need to be presented. Do they need to know more about QBE and how it works? Do they need to know how course codes work? Do they need to know how FTE works? How about policy, policy development and financial issues that, that typically when you're in a classroom, you don't, you don't see those issues, and so we want to make sure we educate them and to learn that process. And then any topic that they think that, that needs to be addressed, and I do know that, you know, teacher retention was one of the areas we talked about last night, you know, what do we do about that? What do we do about certain policies that, that we think need to be implemented and changed? So leadership-wise, the other last thing that I've asked of them is to come to a work session and come to a business meeting, so they see what goes, you know, on, on a monthly basis, and that these decisions aren't made in isolation, there's a lot that goes into them, and as they review this, this, I hope that they pick up from it and, you know, understand that there's a lot of work that, that has had in the process, and that being administrator is a lot more difficult than people realize. And then also to go to some of the other board meetings, go to a city council meeting, go to a county meeting, to see how they run their meetings as well, and to, to take some pros and cons from all that, so. Any comments, anybody that's in the leadership committee would like to make regarding this? And you picked a long one to come to, but I appreciate it. All right, we look forward to that, that being a great process, this, this.
Would you introduce all of them?
Let's start over here, so if you'll stand and introduce yourself and what you do presently, and.
Hi, everyone, I'm Ron DeBugezky. I teach at McIntosh County Middle School, and I'm a Reebok teacher.
Thank you.
And I'm Jerry Doon, I teach at Middle School, sixth grade math.
I'm Amy Hula, I'm an academic coach at Middle School.
Scott Booker, principal of Middle School.
And Ms. Papel is also part of the Middle School Committee. Okay, Sandra?
I'm Todd Grant, I'm a meaner, Todd Grant, academic coach.
Todd Willis, making vice candidate candidate.
Okay, and in the back?
Christina Rickery.
And I'm Smith, third grade, I'm Todd Grant.
And I'm Dale Mitchell, Assistant Principal of our county.
Wonderful, wonderful. And we do have some that aren't in attendance tonight, but they all have a requirement to come to one of these meetings. Thank you. All right. Personnel will cover in executive session, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, and if I can go down to community engagement real quick and talk about shot opportunities. One of the things that, that we asked of our faculty was, if we were to coordinate another vaccination opportunity, would you take advantage of it? And so we had a couple, and, you know, the Friday of the third, the governor gave off for state employees, and then, you know, we said, well, it doesn't, it did not apply to the teachers, but if you wanted to take off that particular day to get a shot, then we would honor that as well. Didn't have a lot of participation in it, but again, every, I'm a fan of the vaccination, I think it's important for everybody to get vaccinated. Student-wise, we sent a survey out to those students that are twelve and older and asked parents, you know, are you interested if we were able to provide a shot opportunity? And I think the answer was about ten percent, maybe, of those who responded, which wasn't a lot, said that they, they'd like for their child to get a shot. You know, it's trying times, and there's still some anxiety overtaking this, this vaccination, which leads into the announcement that was made at five o'clock this afternoon by President Biden. And so just to make sure everybody on the board is, is up to snuff on, on what was presented, that President Biden will, through executive order, direct that any, any business with a hundred or more employees, they will be required to have a vaccination. If they do not get a vaccination, that they then will have to be tested weekly at their own expense. So, and there's a fourteen thousand dollar fine that would be implemented for each case of an individual that does not get vaccinated, and that the employer keeps them on board. That was announced at five o'clock this afternoon, among other issues that came of it. Whether or not that applies to the school system, it's kind of up in the air, but it may very end up happening that we have to put this in place. You know, what, I anticipate some court issues, I anticipate some anxiety over that, but you're going to hear a lot about that in the coming days. So if anybody didn't see it, I see a lot of people that may not have heard that, but this just hit this afternoon at five o'clock. Again, the process, the time off would be provided, that, again, if you go get a shot, you're supposed to get paid time off to do so. I, I anticipate that it's going to get a lot of attention from a lot of people, and he, he indicated that he thought that the process would provide for a hundred million people would be affected by this order. Board comments about it? I'm just curious if you caught up with it. Again, I'm a fan of vaccination, but there was no real mention of exemptions for maybe people who've already had COVID, or, or maybe somebody who has medical conditions, but there was also, and, and, Mr. Braun, tell me if I'm wrong here, but medical personnel, there were no exceptions.
Yeah, there, there's two primary mechanisms that the President announced today. The first was an OSHA rule, which you mentioned earlier, which is part of the Department of Labor, comes under his guidance, and that's, that's where they're mandated about a hundred or more employees, private employers, and, you know, most public employers are exempt from motion, so at this point in time, that OSHA rule would not apply to our district. And the other avenue, which is where it gets interesting, is tying to entities that receive federal funding. So that was the first step about healthcare workers. Almost every healthcare provider organization in the country receives Medicare and Medicaid payments, and if they do, their workers will be mandated to receive the vaccine. Don't know what sort of fines will be involved in that yet, but there will be for, for they don't, for the employers who won't comply, and employees who won't comply will probably be terminated under the, under the guidelines. I don't think employers are going to want to pay fourteen thousand dollars a day to keep the employee, so they would probably terminate the employee. This is a huge step, a major move by the executive branch. This is a huge step, a major move by the executive branch. And also federal employees and direct federal contractors are also mandated.
That's right.
Those, the executive department employees. Under our system, he wouldn't have the authority to mandate to judicial branch or legislative branch, but-
But that may very well apply to the county and the city?
Well, we would be exempt from the OSHA rule, but we've already seen that mechanism for the healthcare workers of tying it to-
Federal money.
Entities that receive federal funds. It's pretty clear that the President and his lawyers have announced that the President does not have the authority to order every individual to have a vaccine. That authority's not there. But they can darn sure tie federal money to employers receiving that federal money. That's been decided over and over. So this was a really big press conference today, a lot going on.
You're going to hear an awful lot more about it over the coming days. So I would expect that the administrators need to start digging in and just kind of know because employees are going to be asking.
Well, one thing that we've got, the OSHA rules being implemented under what they call the emergency temporary standard, which bypasses the normal comment period and things like that. So you can almost bet it was probably a draft already formed prior to this press conference.
Absolutely.
I suspect we'll see that OSHA rule soon. But rules passed under that standard are subject to a higher level of judicial scrutiny. And I don't have any doubt that there will be some suits filed.
There are going to be some challenges to this.
It's going to be interesting. But again, from a personal note, Dr. Pulis, I tend to agree with you. I support the vaccination. It's pretty clear what's happened during this course year.
Yeah, and we've talked about this. And, you know, I'm not here to sway people one way or the other, but with the hospitalizations, you know, nine out of 10, maybe even higher, they're the unvaccinated. And so I encourage people to get it and, you know, I've got my shots. But I also understand there are some people who have legitimate reasons not to, but this is going to be some interesting times. That's all I have. Into executive session for personnel and one legal.
Okay. All right, could I have a motion to go to executive session for legal and personnel?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hewitt, second.
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. McIver. All those in favor? Motion carries 5-0. And we will be back.
Thank y'all for coming.
All right, thank y'all for coming. We appreciate it.
Okay, McIntosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss legal and personnel. Could I have a motion returned to open session?
Motion.
Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Mr. Hewitt, all those in favor? Oh, I guess I should look. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, Superintendent recommends personnel report as submitted. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. McIver, second.
Second.
Ms. McDonald, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Any board comments?
Just glad we're all back and hopefully we're going to have a really good first semester.
I just want to say to our staff, we do appreciate what you all are doing.
Absolutely.
Dr. Pulis and to his entire staff. We do appreciate the extra steps that you all are taking to make sure that you're safe and our kids, but more so to make sure that they're getting the quality of education that they need to move forward. So we do say thank you.
And I will welcome all of our students back. I'm glad to see we only have a handful that are still on virtual at the moment and come on back to school.
Welcome back, teachers are doing a fantastic job. That's all I got.
Welcome back and glad to, likewise, I would echo the other comments and also come on out tomorrow night to the ship and cheer on the Buccaneers against Charlton County.
Okay, we're done.
Thank y'all.